This is our February 6th workshop, or goal-setting workshop. It's our third one of 2021. And we had a couple of open sessions, first two goal-setting, and after getting some additional input and feedback, we got specific topics on the agenda this morning, and I don't know if it'll take two hours or not take two hours, but they're both pretty important, I think, and would like to give them some time if we can. So why don't we start with non-arranged participation? That's been our custom here, and like to continue that tradition. Is there anyone that would like to speak this evening, or I'm sorry, this evening, this morning, there's an old habit this morning? Prior to us jumping into the SIO Township Master Plan discussion.
I see a hand with Sanam.
Okay. Yes, if you could unmute her, please, Justin.
Good morning, everyone. Sanam, six eight nine six, Wellington Drive. I'm here on behalf of Dexter Crossing as the President of HOA. I submitted a letter. I want to say my thanks to Michelle, who very much saved my sanity this week with all the documents that the neighbors have been asking me and having questions. So I really appreciate that, and sorry for the million emails. So with what I submitted, I just wanted to kind of quickly bring that up of why from Dexter Crossing neighbors, we are submitting that. So on Wellington Drive, there are about 20 homes that directly face the Sloan property, and there are 20 or so homes on the other side of the street. When the construction for Dexter Crossing was happening, the developer used Dexter, used the Sloan Farms as basically dumping ground for construction stuff. So you can imagine that since the subdivision just finished about three, about three years ago, how much construction have been going on through Wellington Drive and the two stubs that are from Wellington to the Sloan property. Not only for those who are directly facing the property and constant dust and noise, but also for everyone on Wellington as the trucks zoom through. I moved here in 2016, and for a good year before things calmed down, I would see and hear the trucks as well, even sometimes on the weekends. So the main request, you know, we understand that, you know, at the end of the day, it's SIO, and they will build what they want to build. But if we could give sort of like a, what would be the ideal from our perspective would be the one-acre homes, which would be the low-density possibility, you know, for that property. And also, I think what we are really requesting, understanding that we cannot close permanently those two stubs, is that at least for the duration of the construction, those two stubs are temporarily barricaded. In the past, there have been requests, both from Dexter City Council and the SIO Township, to the developer to not have any trucks and such going through here. When I was at the Planning Commission for SIO a week or so ago, they were like, well, we told them not to have anything going through, but we still see here and there trucks zooming. And if they use construction with the demographics of Wellington that has changed even in the last four years I've been here, we have a lot more families with young children. Just the thought of these trucks zooming through, it's pretty scary. So we would really appreciate if possible that for the duration of the construction, those two stubs are barricaded, and then reopened when, you know, we are at the citizens' traffic, residents' traffic. And the other point that a couple neighbors asked me to put, and I agreed because I see that myself too, is the hunting on Sloan Kingsley. I have no problem with hunting. I'm from a family that has many hunters in it. But the concern is how close they are doing that to the homes and whether they are following all the guidelines they should be following. You know, it's not always during the hunting season. As a matter of fact, on Thursday night, it was going on, and with the deer that decide to run to come to my property, I love them, but I can see that there is a possibility that it is a little bit too close to the residential homes. So I don't know if it can be stopped in that property for, you know, at all, but if at least the guidelines are shared again and reiterated, we would really appreciate it. On that, I really appreciate the time, and if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer. Thank you.
Thanks for attending and participating this morning, Sanam. Does anybody see any other hands up from the members of the public that might want to speak this morning before we get started on our first planned topic? Okay. Is there?
I don't see any.
Okay, okay. Sorry, I thought I said you saw one. Thank you. Okay. Topic number two on our agenda then is the SIO Township Master Plan discussion. And hopefully, everybody had a chance to read Michelle's Page and a Half intro to it, but I'm going to let her open this topic because she's been the one that's talked directly, I think, to SIO, or at least to their planning consultant, Doug Luan. So, Michelle, if you're willing and ready and could give us a little historical background and then move us forward, I'd appreciate it, please.
Thanks, Sean. Good morning, everyone. I hope everyone's having a good Saturday morning.
Thank you.
I'll take the silence as yes, and the two responses the same. Okay.
I'm having too much fun to share it. Take up the whole morning.
If you get me laughing too hard, Don, I'll just start coughing, and this is just going to go downhill.
I'll stop, I'll stop, I'll stop.
Okay, so the township has, as you know, they're in the process of updating their master plan. They do it slightly different than the way we did it, where our entire Planning Commission was actively involved in the entire process, or through the entire process with staff and our consultants. They have a subcommittee that works with a couple members of their commission, possibly even their township board and their consultant to do their master plan. So on January 25th, that was the first day the entire Planning Commission actually saw the entire draft. And they had extensive, I shouldn't say extensive, they had public surveying and input, just like we had, different manner. But they also provide their public input with their plan, just like we did. But that's together what created the draft. And in the draft, Doug Luan, who is with Carlisle Wortman, who's also the company we use for planning consulting, gave me a heads-up of some of the things that this draft is contemplating. And I use that word contemplating because this is just a draft right now. Excuse me. Before I go into exactly what this new plan does, let me touch on a couple of things. This is an opportunity that they're extending to us for input prior to the formal process, where they have to send it out for comments to surrounding communities, regional agencies, et cetera. They're doing this in the same neighborliness, if you will, that we did when we were doing our plan, but for different reasons, in somewhat, but the same in another. Cities have the ability to plan outside their boundaries. But knowing our relationship and having the good relationship that we have had with SIO Township over the years, we wanted to make sure we engage them before just going off and doing it. And you'll recall, excuse me, we sat down, a small group of us with township leadership, and went over the concerns and issues that could arise for planning outside our boundaries, for people wanting to develop property that would require public infrastructure. Because that would require, that would trigger somebody asking for an annexation. Because the township does not intend to extend public utilities throughout the township. It's primarily in certain areas, especially along Jackson Road. This draft master plan is not changing that. They still plan on not extending. And so we had that meeting with them, and they were thankful for that opportunity to participate. And so they're giving us that same opportunity with theirs. It opens up the option for continuing the good relationship that we have. So currently, the Township Master Plan designates the northwest corner of I-94 and Baker Road for a combination of things like what they call open space agriculture and rural residential. They also have a small mixed-use highway commercial area. And you see how, you see that when you come off the freeway and drive on Baker Road at that particular intersection. The open space ag and rural residential designation is intended for preservation of agricultural lands, open space, it has a density of one dwelling unit, a maximum density of a dwelling unit per every two and a half acres. The mixed-use highway commercial designation, it is intended to provide those locations with very specialized commercial uses that are directly related to 94, as well as some mixed-use development of commercial businesses, such as office research and light industrial. You see that in that little node, basically, at the Baker Road-I-94 interchange. That northwest corner of I-94 is also the area where they are currently in the review process for something called the Heritage Encore Development. That is a senior living facility that would be, it's currently planned for some farmland behind the property that you see when you come off the westbound ramp on Baker Road. So there's a portion of it that actually fronts onto I-94. So just keep that in mind for a second. The area along Baker Road beyond the, excuse me, behind that little corner, or beyond that little corner designation of mixed highway commercial is the area where Sloan Farms is. It's a little bit on the west side, mostly on the east side, all the way up to the township or to the city boundaries. And that is in the master plan currently as open space agriculture and rural residential, but also recreation conservation. And the recreation conservation is a designation that intends to provide that interconnected open space system that preserves significant natural features in the township. They are careful to identify that they don't use that as a way to halt development. That is a way to raise the awareness for potential significant natural features. So with the Sloan Farm and the heritage development in mind, as well as those current master plan designations for the Baker Road corridor between 94 and the city boundaries, they are looking at what's called the Gateway Subarea. And that would significantly be different from what is currently planned. The, I'm going to abbreviate it, the GSA would allow mixed-use projects at a higher density than one-acre minimums currently planned. And they see this development area as a gateway, excuse me, from 94 into the township, but also as a gateway into the city of Dexter and our downtown, which they also recognize as a significant part of their identity, at least according to Doug. So the, they also feel that the development within this Gateway Subarea is going to have to be done through the planned unit development process. One, because they're going to want to see those significant material and recognizable benefits, often termed public benefits. Also, if they're not extending public water and sewer, the county requirement for one-acre lots on Wellinseptic comes into play. So you, in doing a PUD, they may end up with these cluster options where homes may be on smaller lots than one acres. But overall, their density will be less than what it would be in a location that was served by public water and sewer. It's highly unlikely that the private treatment system that they would be putting in is going to be able to discharge to Mill Creek as the current development plan anticipated. And there are a variety of reasons for that. One, the National Scenic Designation of the Huron River and Mill Creek being a tributary to the Huron River. The DNR is on record with the township, and I believe I just said this before to you, that it's not something that they would be inclined to consider. And then the recent cases regarding the phosphorus loads into discharges into the Mill Creek and the Huron River are going to also significantly impact. So it's more than likely they will have to do what's called a surface wastewater treatment system. Excuse me. The township has a wastewater treatment ordinance for that type of system. And according to Doug, it is very strict. That's something we don't necessarily have any control over, but I thought you would like to know that nonetheless. Excuse me. The main concern that I expressed to Doug and that I expressed to the Planning Commission is that the change to the higher-density residential and commercial is going to put some pressures on the city. It's going to bring some additional competition that we currently already have due to the Jackson Road corridor, and I'll expand on that a little bit. So Baker Road will become, is already coming off in 94, going to be a more visible corridor. It will be a more traveled corridor. So you've got vehicle trips, you've got visibility, you've got more rooftops, which means you're going to end up with more retail, retail follows rooftops. With the better visibility, the higher traffic volumes that commercial uses could look to, I am concerned that that's going to have impacts on our downtown and our ability to attract businesses in our downtown, as well as our businesses to be sustainable downtown. But I'm also concerned about those areas in Dexter Crossing, Bushes, and the AJ Jonah little strip plaza there next to Bushes. Those commercial uses are going to look at Baker Road, but with a, they're going to recognize the benefits that Baker Road has, and they could look to relocate. Is it going to happen like 24 hours after this were to go through? No, but it is something that I think is something to consider. Excuse me. The, you've heard from Sanam this morning what the Dexter Crossing residents' concerns are. And I think she articulated them very well. She did at the Planning Commission, and she did for you this morning. While the permanent closure of those stub streets after development were to occur, that's something that should be discussed, whether you would really want to permanently close those stubs. Because they would provide some connectivity between neighborhoods, and that's something to consider. But as far as the, at least a temporary closure while construction's happening, or now that construction activity in Dexter Crossing is done, could those be temporarily closed? I think that's definitely something that should be discussed by council with SIO Township, and definitely during the construction process. The hunting as well, too close to residential. And I seem to recall that this is an issue that comes up across the state with the expansion of residential development into areas that have been more rural, been more rural in the past. I'm not exactly sure how the state, the DNR handles this, but I think it's worth doing some investigation. The Planning Commission was very receptive to the township's offer to review their master plan. And the Planning Commission would really like to take this opportunity to engage the township's Planning Commission in more of a joint exercise, if you will. Not a formal joint Planning Commission body, but maybe through a series of meetings, whether that's Planning Commission to Planning Commission or a subcommittee of Planning Commission and City Council with the same at SIO Township. But to really look at this, this particular section of their master plan and work together on how it is planned. I'm eager to hear what your thoughts and your ideas are so that I can compile all this information and take it back to Doug and present it to the township on behalf of the city.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
Michelle, so is the Gateway Subarea then, just for my understanding, would extend from 94 on the west side of Baker all the way up to the city boundary? And then north of the existing commercial on the east side? Or would that change from on the east side all the way also?
So I'm looking at their plan currently, and I'm looking for their map so that I can tell you. So the Gateway Subarea would, and I can put it up on the screen if that would help.
Sure.
Is this in our, is this on the master plan that you gave us?
Yes, it is.
Give us the number then.
Page 59. Excuse me. If you bear with me real quick.
Michelle, I don't get a paper packet, so.
That's what I'm going to put it up on the, yeah, that would be up on the screen.
Yes. I don't know if everybody else prints theirs off, but I don't.
I don't have a paper packet either, Donna, so.
That'll help you too, then. Yep, I'm going to do it right now. I'm pulling it up, and I'm going to get to page 59. Please just bear with me for just a second. It's loading.
Michelle, while it's loading, what, remind council, or me maybe, what the date is that we're supposed to have comments back to them? Or are we not rushed in?
We are not rushed, but it is not, how can I put this? It's not limitless. Like I said, on the 25th was the first day the entire Planning Commission saw this. And, excuse me, when they saw it, they only got through, I think Doug said, the first couple chapters, which would have been.
Okay, that helps a lot.
Which would have been like existing and use in community plans, community goals and policies. But I don't know how they got through all of that. So my suggestion would be that we plan to provide feedback and our request for what we'd like to ultimately do with the township for their next plan. So, okay. Do I have share screen options, Justin?
I'm seeing it.
Okay. I already have it on, Michelle.
Oh, cool. Thank you, thank you. So as you can see, there's a peach area that runs basically from the Ann Arbor Boundary all the way to SIO Township's west boundary. Then the northern portion of that kind of follows I-94. The dark pink or light magenta where it's Gateway Sub, you can see it goes from 94 all the way up to the city's boundary with the city. Now, the interesting thing is, it does not go all the way along the entire south boundary of the cities, of the city. So that portion, that Sloan Kingsley portion, isn't part of this Gateway Subarea. So the concerns that Dexter Crossing residents had with preferring low-density, it looks like that would still stay the same way. But to be perfectly honest, I have not reviewed their Mill Creek Subarea in depth. But again, that would be something that we could provide comment on. But the Gateway is the east and west of 94, but only to that point, whoops. But only to that point where the Sloan Farms development ends on the west, and then it's entirely on the east from that portion up.
Yeah, so when I glanced at this prior, that's what I remember, and I think the picture is real helpful. There's some context here. I mean, that, the pink area, Gateway Subarea only actually touches a very small portion of Dexter Crossing. Actually, it doesn't touch Dexter Crossing at all.
Correct.
Interestingly enough, so. What, one question I would have for SIO is, the gateway is an interesting term. Is it a gateway out of SIO? Or is it a gateway for us, or is it a gateway for them if we go visit them?
So like I said before, SIO Township, according to Doug, views Dexter, the city of Dexter and its downtown, as part of its identity. So the gateway is into the city, which is, they consider historically part of their neighborhood, if you will, not something that they own or they're responsible for. But they have a, it's their connection, okay? So it is a gateway into the city. It's a gateway through their community. It's a gateway from 94 into the city.
So do you know, as you come up Baker, and you get past Marshall, which is the road right under the words "sub" and "area," right? As you get north of Marshall, there's what I'm going to call a mini, I don't know if I should say industrial park or not. On the northeast corner and there's a, there's a road that I can't think of that goes off right at the bend. Before the bend to the east. Is that whole industrial sub in the gateway sub area? Or is it, I can't, there's a like.
It appears that a portion of it is, Sean, at least a portion of it.
What would the logic be on only having a portion of it be in there?
That would be a question to ask Doug. And it may be that these areas aren't necessarily parcel specific. But more or less. Think of it more like a, a macro element, not a micro element. Because you can see between gateway and sub, there's a little road. That, I think that's part of what you're talking about.
It's back, it's back there where the, there's a couple of businesses back there. One, one of them is the balloon place. Another one is the. I forget what the name of it's called there, but it also where the statues are that, that are along the road there. They, that company used to be in, in a city here and now it's out there.
Donna, I see you have your hand up and Jamie also.
I do, just I have a really quick question. When they put this together, do they have new categories or zones that they've added? Or have they always had all of this stuff on the table?
I'm sorry, Donna.
I guess that this happened. Did they add to this proposed master plan any new zoning areas? You know, have they always had gateway sub on their books? Have they always had? Okay, so this is some new stuff then.
Yes, this is all new.
Probably was discussion to talk about how to get some of this stuff in and the impact on the city. Okay, okay. That helps me, thank you.
You're welcome. Sean, I think Jamie has a comment.
Yep, I just waiting for Donna to finish, go ahead.
Thank you.
Yep, um, yeah, a couple, a sort of random things, because we talked about a few things. It does say right in their master plan, it says gateway to, to the city of Dexter. Regarding, yeah, I think two other comments. So in terms of, you know, business or commercial opportunities in the city of Dexter. One thing that came to my mind, I think, is the Grandview Commons, where I think that was originally residential on top. And maybe commercial on the bottom or retail or something on the bottom, is that right?
Right, we, our plan called for, in that area. Excuse me, desire for the mixed use.
Mixed use.
Residential top, retail on the bottom.
Right, and then I think I saw something in a packet not long ago that had said. The owners of that building or whoever manages that, they were having a hard time filling that in, in that commercial retail capacity. So they wanted to switch that out to residential.
So. One fifty Jeffords, one fifty Jeffords.
One fifty Jeff, it was over at one fifty Jeffords.
Yes, right, so when Grandview Commons came in for foresight, PUD site plan review. One of the things that was brought up in the beginning part of the discussion was that the master plan did. Did encourage, did prefer, if you will, the mixed use. The developer did not feel that mixed use in that location was sustainable. And so there was some back and forth between the planning commission and the developer. And in the end, the planning commission accepted the developer's concerns. And it became an all residential, but mixed densities. That was the trade-off. One fifty Jeffords wanted to do all residential when they first came in for their PUD. And the planning commission stood their ground because one fifty Jeffords is so physically close to Main Street. Planning commission was not willing to. To, to, for it, for the building to be all residential. So there is language in the, in the PUD agreement that. As well as in our ordinance. That the, the developer, if they cannot sell those two units for commercial use. Could come back through a formal PUD amendment process and ask for them to be reclassified for residential. The, the developer did come in in October and just had a small conversation with the planning commission. And the planning commission still not real receptive. Excuse me. But the developer has not come in with a formal request.
So, yeah, so one thing I guess that makes me think about is that we've had these, these goals of encouraging commercial. Or, you know, these mixed use development. And Grandview has, has flipped already to residential. And one fifty Jeffords may have already expressed an interest in flipping to one hundred percent residential. And I know Dexter Crossing already, as it, the plaza already has a hard time. Staying filled, so. I understand the concerns about, you know, would the gateway sub further, you know? Would people who are already here be tempted to move? I may be less, you know, without more information, it would be hard for me to know. Whether I think it would prevent new business activity from locating. Because it seems like, my perception is that we're already maybe struggling with that a bit. If these new, brand new buildings are having a hard time getting commercial to go into their, you know, to the lower levels. So that's just one thing that made me think of is what, what is our current level of ability to attract commercial development? Given we've had some new developments where it seems to have struggled. We have an existing development Dexter Crossing Plaza that has a hard time staying filled. I'm sure there are a lot of nuances and intricacies to all, to all of that, but that's one thing that comes to mind. So sort of said that, that's there, my thoughts about that. And then in terms of the Sloan Kingsley Farms and the comments from Sanam representing the HOA, I appreciate those comments. And, uh, you know, I live in that subdivision and moved here a year after Sanam did. And I suppose maybe I knew, I was aware of those stubs, I'm not quite sure. One thing that would seem strange to me is, and I maybe I would need to see another example of it. Where, you know, I would call these subdivisions, I guess, where you would have subdivisions that are part of separate municipalities or townships or cities, whatever. That connect in a way where it almost seems like it's one subdivision. You know, because I know here on Farms has also the Orchard River Hills and that's something, that's a distinction that's sort of lost on me. And maybe even to many of the people who live in that subdivision, because it all just seem, it seems like one. To me, it seems like one, but I know there are separate entities over there. But that's at least within the same, you know, governing body. To me, it would seem strange to have adjoining subdivisions that are not part, you know, ruled by the same governing body. I would probably also have concerns about traffic coming, you know, as a thoroughfare. I don't know what the restrictions are on that. I would be in favor of temporarily blocking it for construction purposes. I don't live on Wellington, but I've, when I campaigned, I talked to a lot of people who lived on that street, heard the same thing. What else would I want to say about that? Yeah, so I guess, yeah, what, when the time came, or, you know, whenever it would be relevant, I'd be interesting to having. In, in having a conversation more about temporarily and or trying to permanently close those stubs. And, and what that might mean for either entity and the people living on either side of it.
If I could address one thing for you, Jamie. So one of the reasons that one fifty Jeffords is having difficulty with the retail. Is because they don't want to rent it, they want to sell it. And most of the businesses coming into downtown, especially right now, are, are smaller. In many cases startups or even whether it's a, whether it's an office, whether it's a retail commercial. And they don't have the financial wherewithal to buy the property. And so the, the, it's really limiting right now. The market that they have to be able to, to attract someone. Possibly if we have not had COVID, there could have been office uses that, that. Somebody might have gone into. As a matter of, of effect, they did have someone before COVID hit. Seriously talking with them and going through the process of looking at purchasing one of the units. For residential on the second floor and using the first floor as their commercial. COVID hit and they decided they weren't going to go forward.
Okay, that's helpful. Was Grandview the same situation where they wanted to sell instead of lease?
No, Grandview didn't want to do commercial at all.
Okay.
Grandview, Grandview was industrial. And switched completely from that to the proposed mixed density residential.
So that was never, that was, I'm sorry, I must have misunderstood, that was never proposed to be a mixed use development at Grandview?
No.
Okay, so only one fifty, okay.
Only one fifty closer to town, Jamie.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, why, I think you had your head up next and then I saw Paul's pencil waving, so we'll do why and then Paul, that's okay.
Yeah, and I, you know, what I, the comment I wanted to make was sort of just addressed by Michelle. I just think we need to be careful in assuming that we're having a hard time filling commercial spaces. When we're dealing with a developer who never wanted commercial spaces in the first place. I just, you know, I, I, the motivation to not fill them may very well be there. I, I don't want to speak for them, you know, I'd like to ask them that directly. But I just think we need to, to be careful about assuming that.
Okay, thank you, anything else? Okay, Paul?
Well, just a couple of minor things, then before I get started. If you look down at that map, it says Silver Lake subdivision, but it's not Silver Lake. It's Sister Lake subdivision and that is exactly what it says in the narrative to the left of that. So that should be corrected for them, you see that, Michelle?
Yes, thank you, Paul.
And then it's, which I've said before, it bugs me to death that they use these old maps. That the city of Dexter does not have Mill Pond, up in upper left-hand corner of that same map. It's a river or creek that goes through there. There is, is not a dam there now. And if they would update that, it would make some of us much more happier in that area too. So I, I'm trying to figure out what a gateway sub area is, okay? And so I try to think about. Places that are off the highway like we are. And yet they're connected by a straight line to that. And if you go down ninety-four, the first one to come to is obviously Chelsea. And, you know, you start there, if you come off the freeway. And there are a lot of fast food places there on that spot. There are some businesses that have been established there, like the Chelsea Lumber Yard. There's the new shopping center where the grocery store is there. And then you are down and it's filled up with these smaller places. And then you get to Jackson Avenue. I mean, yeah, to, yeah, where Jackson comes in there, the old US twelve. And then, then it starts getting to residential there. But everything from there, all the way to the highway is pretty commercial. And very, very, very high density there. Lane is very wide, they have a center turn lane there. And I think I look at, if I go to further west, I find some of the same thing there in Jackson area. And some of the other smaller towns that are slightly off the freeway there. They have that same look when you drive into it off the freeway, you get that. I'm assuming that's, that's what this is gonna look like in the future. Minus maybe a few other things that, that they're putting in that gateway sub like that senior center and all that. So I, I don't, I don't know if we're gonna be able to stop that, but I don't know what, when it says gateway, to me, it, it seems to be very commercial. And not very attractive. And I don't know how many of those businesses that we will have in our present area will be impacted by that type of business at all, okay? So I don't know if we should be concerned about that or, or just aware of it. But I, I, I just, I don't like that look, never have liked that look, but that's the way you always see the looks off of that. That's one of the reasons that we've kind of not wanted to have a bypass around the city either. Because we knew what would happen then on that bypass would be the same thing over there on Parker Road. So we, that's, some of us have been concerned of that for a long time, so. I guess I'd like to know, know a little bit more about what they really mean. When, when they're talking about this, because a variety of land uses and zoning districts are found within the sub. As well as underutilized and vacant property. Gateway to the city of Dexter, high density residential uses and commercial. The only high residential unit, I guess, are two of those and one on the Marshall Road. That I see, so for the senior, the senior center there that they're talking about. And then of course, the Sloan property. I don't see any other piece of property there that could be turned into that unless you buy all those houses along there and tear them down. And buy them out for, you know, a high price and eliminate them and then start putting. Sub shops and McDonald's and more things along that area there.
It becomes very suburbanized, very.
Very quickly.
Yes.
Very quickly, and then, you know, I, I don't think we're able to stop that. Or it's just gonna happen, it's not gonna happen in my lifetime. But it's, in a period of time, it's gonna be, it'll look just like Chelsea does from the freeway all the way to US twelve Baker or Jackson Avenue there. And that's what it's gonna look like. I don't know if we can stop that, if we want to stop it or what, but we ought to have that discussion. And I, and I don't know why they, they would want to do that, other than for the tax dollars.
You raised some good points and I think it's worth talking with them about, Paul.
And, and let me, let me, just somebody review for me, Sean, Dan, you were involved in this. What was the difference in? When we worked with Jim Heiser before and his subdivision, what was the difference between point A and point B? Of the amount of money they would have to put in for either this, what's now, that's the first. I don't know what a surface district treatment facility is. I'm on a water council, I don't know if we got any of those in water council at all. I've never heard of that, that term used before. I, I know what the private sewer is, that's what they got over there on Jackson Avenue. On the corner there of Parker and, and the Jackson Avenue. So I don't know what that is and what is effective as, as you mentioned with the phosphorus. And what it also is in the other potential contamination into the creek. But there's gonna be, you know, I, I don't see why we would want to agree to anything like that. When we have a park that is having this creek run through our land, our, our city. And along the edges of it and the end of the Huron River and be potentially having contamination problem like these other ones have. As well as the phosphorus, which we've spent a lot of money for. So tell me what the difference was in, in why we finally rejected Sloan property back, what, five years ago, six years ago, whatever it's been?
You mean when Heiser came in and asked for the annexation and we went through that process?
Yeah, what was the difference in price that he had to pay to go on our sewer plant and not?
Yeah, I wanted to answer the first question. What I've heard, what they're proposing to do is a big giant drain field with basically a headworks building in front of that to remove the solids. Is what they're looking at now. Whether that's true or not, but that's, and I didn't even know that that was possible, but that's what I've heard. With wastewater facility for part of that development. I don't know if, if it's up by ninety-four or back towards loans, but that's what I've heard.
I heard it was, I heard any of their activities gonna be across the road in the space that they have between Baker and the creek.
Right.
Because they still have some property there.
Right, because that's where they wanted to discharge when it was discharged to Mill Creek. I, they don't, to the best of my knowledge, they don't have plans yet for a surface discharge. Those would have to be developed if they prefer, if they decide to go forward. Currently, their project is on hold, waiting for the master plan to be completed. So I can tell you that in Lion Town. So I can tell you that in Lion Township, years, years, decades ago. When one of their first large subdivisions with a golf course went in, Tanglewood. That developer did a um surface water treatment plant. Years later, the township through an agreement took over that wastewater facility. And that's what they use and have extended through their entire township to provide. Utilities in the township. So it went from a private system and is now a public system. You've got, my understanding is when you have those large facilities, there are two types. It's either a direct discharge to a surface water like a creek, a river, a lake, an ocean. Or you've got surface water discharge that basically filters out the solids, which are then trucked away. And then whatever lasts, it just sort of slowly. Goes through the um the ground and recharges. And I'm using very generic terms. Sean, you'll be able to be more specific as an engineer than I can be.
Well, look, what I've learned is about being an engineer is you don't. Try not to be very specific because you'd be wrong as soon as you open your mouth that way. I think that, I think the confusion. When, when, when I, at least in the industry, when I understand the word surface, it usually goes with water. It means you're discharging to a a lake, a stream. Not usually a lake, more of like a stream or or a river, something that's gonna carry the water away as opposed to settle in a spot. What what Dan described is like a community septic area. I mean, it's 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 the, think of an individual home that would have a septic field. In in that situation, all of the solids and wastewater would would settle out in a tank. And over time, you would empty out the tank. You know, and the, but the water, the premise of a septic field is the water essentially leaches back into the ground. Okay, everybody understands that concept. Dan described, used a good word, headworks, and that's a term that we should be familiar with because we have, we just invested in. Significant effort in our headworks. At our plant, we have, I think, a plant that discharges to surface water. Okay, we, our, our, our wastewater that comes into our wastewater treatment plant. Goes through our headworks process where it takes out the grits and the fines. And then the solid, the heavy solids get settled out through the treatment process or or used by the bugs. And then the water gradually, as it makes its way through the treatment plant, gets cleaner and cleaner and treated secondary and tertiary. And uh. You know, then then flows out to Mill Creek, which turns into Huron River. Paul, you mentioned the facility upstream at Parker and Jackson. That is the Thornton Farms subdivision that I think you're talking about.
Yes.
Okay, they also discharge to surface water. If you were to go and look at that plant. It is laid out, it's smaller than our wastewater treatment plant, but it has many of the same. Components, concrete tanks.
Yeah.
Use of bugs to digest the solids. It's got a list, listation to get the flow into the plant and then it flows hydraulically through the plant. And after it reaches the tertiary treatment, it flows out to Mill Creek. I I know that because my company has done engineering for them. Okay, we we've, we fixed their phosphorus problem. They were, they were on the Eagle or Department of Environmental Qualities. List of not meeting their phosphorus limits for several months or years and. That for the last year and a half or two years has been corrected. But those are both, in my opinion, surface water discharge. They discharge to a a receiving stream. I don't know if I'm helping answer the question, Paul, that you asked, but I I think, you know, the, 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 the. The real concept here is private versus public. Okay, that, 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 that concept gets mixed here. I mean. The homeowners association at Thornton Farms or the condominium association at Thornton Farms. They own that plant. And they have, they, they have an NPDS permit, just like we do.
Yep.
Here in Dexter. They're, they're responsible for it. They have to hire a licensed certified operator. To take care of that, just like we do. You know, it's not all that different. You can call it private because it's not owned by a government. But it serves, I don't know how many homes are in there, two hundred and fifty or something like that?
Yeah, two fifty, I think.
You know, there's two hundred and fifty public people that own that, that make up that condominium association. That their association is responsible for through their water and sewer rates. Within that little subdivision, it's not owned by a government entity, okay? And that's where the, that's where all this gets kind of confusing. The other part of your question, Paul, was. When, when they, when Heisler's company, Peter's Building or whatever, and his partners, I think it was Higgins or something like that. When they requested that we review that annexation idea. There was a cost associated with bringing a large. Or a long run of sanitary sewer from the Sloan property. Down, I think, the east side of Baker to connect somewhere in the vicinity of the roundabouts, right near Dan Hoy. And Baker. And I can't recall the exact cost of that sewer, but I think it was like a million and a half projected or somewhere in that range. Dan might know. And and but but the, the issue was though that our plant was gonna have to have upgrades and other components. There were other components within our plant that would have been limited. And they would have had to make plant upgrades, and I can't remember what they were, a clarifier or.
Activated sludge tanks, clarifiers. Um, it was significant. It was really significant, and it was into the millions of dollars it was gonna take to be able to accommodate that, so.
But the, the concept that they're thinking about it like a community septic field. With a more improved headworks process, meaning they would take the grits and the fines and the solids out ahead of time before it just. Water leached into the ground. Is interesting. I would think that that whole area there near Baker Road ultimately. You know, flows west towards Mill Creek. You know, whether, whether the water would actually make its way there, you know, physically or not, underground or through the. You know, through the soils or not, I don't, I don't know. I don't know enough about it to to tell you, but that's. Sorry for talking so long. That's my answer to the, to I think your questions, Paul.
I I think, I think I understood that. Now, I did, it's the first time I heard about the septic system concept, but that. That makes sense of what they're trying to do to it, but we know that when you get that water anywhere. Into the ground, it's eventually gonna leach out somewhere, okay? Just ask Dan Arbor now about what they have and the problems that they have with their contamination. Tension contamination into their creek from. Property over there on, on.
Almond?
Yeah. So I I I guess I wanted to understand more about what that meant because I'd never heard of that word. Maybe it's just a different type of. Discharge, but it's, it's a different word that I've had, you know, and I'm familiar with. With what, how septic systems work, or I mean, how sewer plants work, you know, when I first came to Dexter, we had primary and. You know, the joke was you took out the solids and dumped the rest in the river, and that's about basically what it was, okay? And then we upgraded those over the years and. That, there's another private system though on a corner of, of Huron River Drive and Z Bro there too where the. Big company used to be there, it's not there anymore. They, they, but it's used by a lot of different companies, but they, they also have some contamination going in there. That they believe could have, has started up over the last few years, maybe the last ten years. Just because of the whack of operation, it's a private company again with little. Concern about how they're going to affect the river when they dump stuff in. So, you know, we're, I I'm really concerned about how that really is gonna work out for the city here. And as I think I mentioned once before, you got about six hundred fly fishermen there from. Ann Arbor area and around that, that are not gonna be too happy if that's gonna contaminate the river. Target limit is a very strong organization. And when they get their teeth into something, they're gonna stop it. And Bill Ford's, because he had a lot of money and he hired a lot of good lawyers, stopped the one over there. On the other side of Ann Arbor, on the, on the east side of Ann Arbor there, and that, that subdivision. Supposed to have over five hundred. That was from the company in Detroit that was gonna come out and build a five hundred. Unit subdivision there. Completely stopped that, and I was gonna do the same thing. It's gonna pour into the river.
So, Paul, thanks. So just, just let me just make one quick comment, then I'll go to Jamie, Juan, back to Dan. So as we've been talking here for the first hour of this, again, the, the purpose of the discussion is to try and. Uh, make comments. I've been trying to take some notes so I can share those with Justin and Michelle, but. What I'm hearing is that one of the primary concerns associated with any development in that area. Regardless of the type, but any, is the environmental impacts of any wastewater discharge on Mill Creek. Given that it's upstream of the city of Dexter. That's, that's, I'm hearing one general category. The second that I'm hearing a little bit, mentioned started by, I think, Sanam and then Jamie. Would be the, the connectivity or the, the traffic connectivity potential. From Baker Road ultimately to Dexter Ann Arbor Road, you know, via Dexter Crossing. It's interesting to me that the gateway sub area does not put the higher density. At least as it's shown, adjacent to Dexter Crossing. It appears that that is still proposed to be. Larger, if it's staying, I'm not sure what the Mill Creek designation is, Jamie. You, it sounds like you've read a little more of the, of the. Master plan than I've had the opportunity to do yet, so I don't know what it says there, but. I think one of, one of the initial concerns was, you know, how many homes in the density and would they need those, those connections? To have a lot of homes off of Dexter Crossing. It, it's sort of unclear from. What the, what this gateway sub does to impact that, but it appears that it's still larger residential there. And then the third, the third or the fourth question or third question, I guess, relates to. If they do allow more commercial or mixed use, whatever mixed use is. It's always the great question in zoning and planning, mixed use. Whenever you don't know, you call it mixed use. Is, is, would that have an impact on, you know, our mixed use areas or our commercial areas that where we? That's what I've heard so far. That's where we are like an hour in. Wah, I'll let you go first and then Jamie and then.
That just sort of, I I just wanted to. Sort of bring it back around and say what, what are, when is our next opportunity to give feedback to SIO? And what the heck are we gonna say to them? So you sort of just covered all that. So I think I'm good.
Well, if, if, if everybody agrees with the general concerns, my thought was that we, we let Michelle prepare. Some type of written summary of our concerns, maybe, and maybe it's. She adds to it that from the planning commission, and then we get a chance to see that before it's officially. Sent off as a, as a whatever, but I think. That's kind of what I'm thinking the direction is. To be determined, I guess. Jamie?
Thanks, Dan. And we don't need to sit on this topic for much longer, but I did. Send over to Justin to have him pull up a document that the owners of that property had submitted to the SIO Plan and Commission. I think it was just this past September. And in that document, they have, because I, I think they brought it to their attention to say, hey, you know, you guys are working on reviewing the master plan. We would like to consider that you increase the density. Potential for that property. So there are two maps. So this first one here, if everybody is oriented, Dexter Crossing is up on the top. Baker Road is over there on the left. This also illustrates where that potential wastewater treatment location is. So there are two maps, I'll page just five and six. So this first map is. My, my quick glance of this document, I read it more closely this past fall. Was that they would like to have this greater density, which I think I can look at it over here on my own screen so I can scroll a little bit. It's two hundred sixty three units. I think, and then is requesting to use both of the stubs into Dexter Crossing in the upper right. So you see, you know, over on the left, it's more of the potential. Like multifamily or or attached, so they have. The darkest ones, age targeted condominiums, efficiency condos detached. And then closest to Dexter Crossing, they're calling those single family lots. They're saying that's one point zero eight density units per acre, if that's what you mean. So two hundred sixty three units, and then if you scroll down. Justin, to the next page, I don't know if this is what they had originally proposed, or if the next page is, next page is all single family lots. Yeah, you can scroll all the way down to page six. Yeah, so it's all the same color. So then that's another potential plan, and that one, I don't know if you can see on the upper right, they only propose using one of the stubs into Dexter Crossing. Anyways, if, I just wanted to draw this document to people's attention. It's something that either could be added somewhere, whatever, it exists. It seems relatively current. It was presented this past fall, and it helped illustrate some of the things that we were just talking about, so I wanted to pull those up.
Thanks. Yeah, and you, you know, when, when you look at like just the map that's up there now. You know, assuming that there would be. You know, when, if you come off of Baker Road, assuming that there would be a stop sign. You know, you come in and then you gotta go left or right, right? So I'm assuming there's a stop sign there probably. And whether you go left or right, there's a stop sign to the left and cru- cruise up before you get to a T, you're gonna have a stop sign. It's, you know, it's connected, but the reality is it's probably not convenient. Necessarily, if you were trying to get. North, you know, especially with the roundabouts and no light at the roundabouts now. You can get through that intersection of Shield and Dan Hoy very quickly. And over towards bushes if the concern was that somebody was gonna try and cut through for that matter. Just one perspective. I don't, I'm not saying that it's right or wrong or easy. Maybe, maybe I'm making it sound too easy, but it looks like a lot of stopping to me and a lot of very low. You know, speed areas.
Yeah, I mean, I think one stub is preferable to the two stubs and there, you know, the two stubs. So I guess I don't know how many homes are in Dexter Crossing, if it's right around one hundred, and maybe Sanam could weigh in on that. Let me scroll on my own. So two hundred sixty three units versus one hundred ninety seven. So they're proposing almost two hundred units, even in the lower density version, and then an additional, like, you know, sixty units. I don't know what Dexter Crossing is, if that's something, you know, that's double the size or not, but.
I think Dexter Crossing is almost three hundred, right?
Yes, yeah, I don't know.
Dan, thanks for waiting.
I had a couple of thoughts. Uh, my first thought is. Why don't they bore underneath the highway and connect to Ann Arbor? And I'm guessing that the reason that that isn't right now being a consideration may be the same reason they didn't want to bring these developments into the city of Dexter. But I don't know.
It's the cost.
You know, um, they do have water on the proposed new development area, but they don't have sewer over there. So they're looking at other options. But not the option of the city of Ann Arbor. After everything everybody's talked about. There's gonna be a, we believe there's gonna be an impact. I don't know if it's, it's. With these two new developments, if that makes it more. Cost effective for them to, to approach a city, I don't know. And I don't even know if that's some council is, um, you would consider, I guess. That's it. Well, I, see me, Dan, you said the two new developments, this one here and then the senior center or Marshall, is that? Well, there, to me, it's two different developments. We had the first one that was proposed at the pictures up, right? That they came to us with, uh, bringing into, you know, bringing, bringing into the city, and now we got this new one that's just. On the other side of ninety four that stretches down towards Mill Creek, you know, Parker Road, so. I don't, I don't know. I don't know if that would cut the cost enough for them. To wanna come to the city again. I have no idea.
Can you unmute Sanam and Marie, Justin? Sanam, question?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to say that the Dexter, I believe, two hundred sixty five units. I appreciate Jamie putting this map up because the, so the last meeting of SIO Planning Commission or the first one. Was one on twenty fifth, and the next one is this Monday. And they, when they were discussing, knowing that I was there and I made a similar statement. They, they said that currently what they are, part of their proposal and thinking is the maps that just was put up. So they kind of like paused on those because of the master plan, but if they are. But if they are, you know, after reviewing their master plan, they're they're thinking of getting back to the developer to talk about the first one versus the second one, you know, the more dense one versus the, the last dense one.
Thank you. Marie?
Dexter Crossings is 260. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay. Great. Michelle, I, can you put, can you put the map back up that showed the the Gateway sub area for a quick second? Yeah, whoever it was.
You see it?
I can't. Yeah. So Michelle, I, I wonder, I was wondering, just looking there while we were listening. Up near the cities. You know, up near where Shield Road would be. If everybody can picture that, there's a little section within the city that is in blue or light blue. Or whatever that teal, whatever that color is teal that they're using for the Mill Creek sub area. Yeah. Why would they show that? Are they planning outside their borders there? And then, and then do they also need to show or acknowledge? You know, the schools, the high school is technically a 425 area that is not identified there that is technically right now, at least in the city through whatever the 50 year agreement would take it out to be 2047.
I'd have to go through the rest of the plan to see if the 425 areas are shown anywhere, Sean. I don't recall them being, but that's a really good question. And that little green, the sea green area that you were circling with your, with whoever was using the cursor there, the little sea green area in the lower that front on to, fronts on to
Shield.
Shield. They are not, township technically cannot plan beyond their boundaries.
I didn't think so.
They can't.
I, I think that that's just a mistaken border.
Correct. So one of the things we would do is to make sure that they update their map properly. And I think like Justin said, that's just a mistaken oversight there.
Okay. Does, does, my last question on this topic is, does, other than the Gateway sub area? Does the master plan propose any other changes on borders to our our area? You know, as, like as you drive out Dexter and Arbor Road. You know, going east past bushes and past where the country market, you know, used to be.
Right down the Dexter and Arbor corridor area, you mean?
Yeah. So it's up there, you know, just to the, I'm pointing with my mouse, but you can't see it probably, but up to the yeah, right. Nope, nope, nope. Yes, right there. Yep, right there. You know, there, there's some properties there that have had some interesting changes to them. There's a large berm that was built right along the road and there's a big building that's been put back in there and there's a there were a whole bunch of buses back in there before. Are, are those zoning areas changing or, or?
No, according to their master plan, Sean, the existing land uses there are primarily low to medium single family residential densities, the higher densities are, become closer to the city of Dexter. The office industrial, commercial uses focus is on Baker Road between Marshall and 94. So in other words, into the gateway area. And they identify both the Huron River and Mill Creek as major natural features. So development along Dexter and Arbor Road is not they're not looking to change, to make major changes there. Anything that impacts the creek, anything that impacts the Huron River. They're not interested in increasing densities as such in those areas.
Okay. Thanks, thanks for clarifying.
Well, one other thing, Sean, and we discussed this with our recent OHM update meeting. If and when we do Dexter Crossing roads for maintenance. We don't necessarily want heavy truck traffic going through that area. Once those roads are redone.
Yeah, I had that same thought.
Understood. Okay. Do people have other comments at this point? Doesn't mean we can't make them again later. Michelle, there's some opening input for you, I guess.
It's very helpful. Thank you all. If you have any other comments or thoughts that you want to jot down and just send to me an email, please feel free. I'd like to get these compiled and over to Doug by the end of next week. I believe their next planning commission meeting. I'm gonna be shooting for their, their, their planning commission, I know meets the the fourth Monday of the month, just like just like ours, or just like our city council. So that's the meeting that I'll be shooting for, the second meeting in February.
Okay. I, I think one question that would be interesting to ask Doug is, is the comment that Paul raised about, and Paul, if I get this wrong, help me out. You asked the question about, you know, are they doing it for the tax dollars? And I would be interested to understand if the residential uses offer a higher tax dollar or an industrial. I say industrial, but you know, like those industrial park, I mean, at one time, we talked a lot in this area about a potential connection to our industrial park. And I know that that would take cooperation from our largest user back there, Dexter Fastener Technology, but there, there physically is a way that that could occur. And there could be connection of an industrial park, which would mean that there, you wouldn't, if you wanted to connect from Baker Road up to Dan Hoy, you wouldn't need to go through Dexter Crossing. If that was allowed, you know, they could, there's another way to do that. Anyway, just curious about their thoughts there.
Thanks, Sean, because I think that's one of the things I was gonna bring up that yeah, we had always talked about some kind of connectivity there between Baker Road and industrial parks. So before it got to the two roundabouts now and coming up come up with Dan Hoy there. So take the traffic off of that area there. Out of the school area as well with all the trucks. And there's a lot of, you know, if you driven up there, there's a lot of trucks that come up that road to the industrial park there. So this, if these two subdivisions, two plans there, that eliminates all of that.
Okay. Well, let's, let's, um, it's about 10:20. Is it okay if we switch topics?
Well, Wa has her hand up.
I missed, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Wa. I'm sorry.
One quick thing, I pulled up the Sciopunture meeting list and they do have a planning commission meeting on Monday. Just so we're aware.
Okay. Thank you, Wa.
Yep.
Thank you.
This doesn't, Sean, this doesn't preclude any council member going to those meetings and expressing their own opinion as well as the city's position, correct?
No, I, I don't think so, Paul. You know, one of the things that I know has been asked and then maybe it's clarified is that I don't think that they actually ever had a public hearing on either of those two maps that were, where the, well, they might've tried to have a public hearing, but they didn't notice the people in the city that are adjacent to those properties for those two plans, right? Is that correct, Michelle?
So the Sloan, Sloan Farms, which would include the Sloan Kingsley properly. No, when they held their preliminary PUD plan, public hearing. That did not include any residents of the city. At the time, the township clerk did not understand that they had a responsibility to notify outside their boundaries. They now know that. So they know that when this development, if it comes back, they would have to go through a, another public hearing on it. And the residents of Dexter Crossing, as well as all those industrial property owners will be notified.
Thank you. Okay. Let's get down to item three, the city office discussion. If you've had any chance to look at your packet that Justin sent out on Thursday. There's quite a bit of information related to city offices and the idea of temporary space or permanent space or do we move or do we stay or do we wait? Do we own? Do we lease that kind of thing? And I know we don't have Zach here today, but I think that there's the potential for a very long discussion, maybe multiple discussions on this. And I thought it made sense to let Justin review what he's put together and anyway, have, have a dialogue here today about that topic. It's one of the, one of the important topics that we wanted to get to in our goal setting and I'm glad we're able to do it. So Justin, I'll turn it over to you. If you wanna start us off, maybe you can take this map down and put up whatever you want or not. Go from there.
Sure. Me, the map down.
Thanks.
And I don't really have anything to replace it with, but um, yeah, so because there's a lot of information that was included in your packet from Monday. We wanted to give the opportunity for, for a discussion today. Rather than having a three, four hour discussion on Monday. So an item was proposed at the last meeting to move city offices. And city staff wasn't contacted or consulted prior to the submission of that item. And we wanted to take this opportunity to provide counsel with the thoughts of city office staff. And take the opportunity to review the facility needs assessment as it relates to city offices. We also, as requested at the last meeting, we went and got draft lease agreements from both Oxford and Matt Schuster through Jeff Evans, I believe it is, for the former Encore Building. And so all of that is, is provided in your packet as well, along with some renderings for 3045 Broad Street and 8140 Main Street. And the lease agreements or the draft lease agreements for city council chambers for the senior center and for St. Andrews. For, well, and since they're just, just kind of start things off. If we were to go with either the former Encore Building or Dexter Crossing, neither of them would be complete with build out prior to the March 31st deadline for a return to in-person meetings. So I, I think that's, that's probably the most immediate need is to figure out where city council is going to meet. But after that, city staff did, did provide thoughts on existing city offices and also shared with you some of the comments that, that were provided through the facility needs assessment about current city offices and, and the issues that we're running into with our current facility needs. As well as some thoughts on the various options that city council has discussed for potential future city offices, whether that's temporary or more permanent options. So I, I don't know if city council wants to start off with, with any questions that you might have or, or any thoughts. On what's been provided.
Justin, I'll, I'll, I'll jump in if I, since I don't see a hand right away. So the, let's just start with the Open Meetings Act and the current situation. Obviously we're meeting virtually today. My understanding is that at the end of March, the ability to hold meetings virtually ends unless you have a really good reason or there's a some other act of the county that declares we can't do it or something like that. Correct? Okay. So in all likelihood, starting with our April meeting or the, the month of April meetings for our series of, of not just council, but planning commission, DDA, et cetera. We need a space to be able to have those meetings in public. Now, I suppose the legislature could extend the virtual window. They've done that before. We've seen them do it twice now. Once to the end of the year and then from the end of the year through the first quarter. I don't have a sense of whether they would extend that or not, but assuming that it ends on March 30th. Your packet here has two options. One is an $80 per meeting or, or $80 per whatever. Was it out, 80 per meeting?
Per meeting.
Yeah. Okay. $80 per meeting for the St. Andrews Church facility and then 150 for the, the senior center. You know, I'm personally willing to pay the lesser amount. And, and try the St. Andrews. You know, that seems to me like we should figure that out. I don't know what that comes out to in terms of total dollars for their for a year or for the remaining budget cycle or whatever, but that's probably something that, just looking at that situation, we need to take up for at least an ongoing basis. I mean, I don't think we're committed to any period of time. It would just be as, based on per meeting, right?
Correct.
So that those leases could be, or those, those ability to rent those spaces could end whenever we wanted, if there was some other space available or some other thing that we decided. But it would seem prudent to have that as a a decision topic, maybe not, I'm not saying for Monday or even today, because we don't make decisions today. That seems like something we should be discussing and having as a decision topic either later in February, or I'd hate to think we're gonna wait till the end of March to figure that out. Jamie, so your hands up, please.
Yeah, I guess there are silence. I'll just say I agree. I would also be in favor of the, the less expensive option. I didn't really notice any other major differences between what the two spaces would give us. So yeah, I would be happy to consider that action item as soon as we think it makes sense.
Okay. Thank you for that support on that.
Yeah, really, really the, the major difference is that the senior center has a sound system that we can plug microphones into. But, or council can just speak loudly.
But both, both have a bathroom available.
Both have, have available parking, both have a big enough space. I believe an opportunity to store our bin on site. They both provide tables and chairs. We would have to do setup at both, set up and break down.
Donna?
Yeah. Do the, the, whoever you were negotiating with or whoever negotiated is does Encore know that we have an option for 50 a month? And is there any room there to negotiate since at the senior center, there's a closet to put your stuff in and that sort of thing that you might not have at St. Andrews. And it's hard to put a dollar figure on all of that, but.
So when, when we were in the initial, so also, I guess, going back to kind of the start of, of COVID. We were told that we would not be able to have our meetings at, at the senior center.
Right.
After further conversation with specifically Jim Carson is the, is the person that, that I talked to.
Okay.
You know, we, we pitched the $80 a meeting option. It's my understanding that he talked to Dan Cooney at the Encore. It's my understanding that he talked to Dan Cooney at the Encore, and they came back with a hundred and fifty per meeting. My assumption in that, and this is me reading into the situation, it may or may not be correct, that their goal is to basically split whatever fee we're paying between the two of them.
I see.
And so, that's why it basically doubled.
Yep, and there really isn't any room then to probably negotiate it. Okay, thank you, Justin.
Paul, I see your pencil. I think.
How many people have been in St. Andrews Church to know what that space looks like?
So, we use it as one of our voting precincts. And it is a very good size.
I've been in there for like, I forget what they call it, the bazaars or the Girl Scouts used to sell stuff. I mean, my recollection is it's pretty big. I haven't been in there in the last year or more, but. Ms. Knight?
Yes, thank you. I think both spaces are equivalent in size. I think, you know, either one of them would work. I guess my question is, how is this going to affect planning commissions, EBA, and all our other boards and commissions? Well, do we be renting it for them as well? Is that eighty dollars per night?
Correct, yeah, it would be eighty dollars per meeting.
So, we'd have to pay eighty dollars?
Correct, and on the flip side, it would be a hundred and fifty per meeting. So, if we rented it, if we rented the senior center for planning commission, arts, culture, heritage, parks and rec, either you're paying one fifty for each of those individual meetings or eighty dollars for each one of those individual meetings at St. Andrews.
Okay, and then who does the follow-up with the cleaning and the sanitizing? Is that the city's responsibility?
That would likely be our responsibility, and I have the case.
Okay, thank you. You've answered my question.
Julie, just a quick follow-up, and Michelle, help me if I remember this right or wrong. But I think in December, before the state legislature extended the Open Meeting Act from December thirty-one to March thirtieth, the DDA actually voted to use St. Andrews. We were looking at options for what would they do in January. And so, they're certainly committed to, you know, that option to pay for their share of whatever that usage would be.
Yes, that's correct, Sean.
Okay, thanks. Donna?
Oh, I didn't take it down, sorry.
Okay.
Go on.
Who am I missing then?
I don't see any other hands.
Okay.
I had my hand up, but I took it down, but I guess I could put it back up because.
Yeah, no, go ahead, jump in.
I just wanted to thank Justin for putting this together. It was really helpful. Excuse me, for me, and the level of detail that was provided was helpful. As a new person, trying to consider all of these different temporary and permanent options for the city offices. So, I, yeah, I look forward to having this as we have our discussions. I think it's really helpful. Thank you.
Julie?
Yes, thank you. Is there any possibility that we could use the excuse that we don't have a meeting place as a reason to extend the virtual meetings? Because I think we get good citizen participation under virtual meetings.
I agree with that. That's another discussion as to whether when we meet, when we meet, even if we meet in person, we could continue, I suppose, to have a virtual option for people to at least listen in. I'm not sure what the Open Meetings Act would say about them participating that way, but.
So, we have, I don't think that there is any Open Meetings Act regulations that prevent members of the public from participating virtually. We have already purchased a webcam, and so, if we would like to, when we do go back to in-person meetings, my thought was that we would use that webcam to video the area that city council is sitting to Zoom, and then people can log on and basically watch through Zoom city council meetings. I haven't, I don't know that I've nailed down the audio portion of that yet. I'm not sure whether it's going to be better, just, you know, using a laptop as the audio input or whether we do need an external microphone to plug into it. But the options are there.
Thank you. Thank you for your thought on that. Keep looking into that stuff. Michelle, I see your hand, I think.
Yes, please. Um, Justin, does the city have the ability to to continue virtual meetings if they set their own emergency procedures? The reason I ask that is, it sounds like, it sounds like city council would like to continue virtual meetings for a variety of reasons, but, and so that's why I'm asking the question. I thought there was something that allowed the local municipality to set up its own emergency procedure.
So, yeah, the state law does allow for local declarings of state of emergency. So, whether that, so if, for example, if the county declared a state of emergency, we could piggyback onto that to continue virtual meetings, or city council itself could consider declaring a state of emergency. And I think it needs to be done either through resolution or ordinance to allow for that.
Is that what we want to do?
I would not be in favor of that, I don't think. I mean, I think as long as, I think if we're meeting, I mean, I'm open to considering it. I don't, I don't know how that would look to people if, I don't know, if it seems like we're hiding behind something to not meet in person. But I agree with the points of, you know, however, we can get public participation if it's, you know, we're physically in person. I think that maybe is how the school board has done it. We're there in person, but they do allow remote participation by the public, whether it's through Zoom, whether we're, you know, putting it up on YouTube, something. I mean, I would be, I would feel comfortable personally being at an in-person meeting of city council. Maybe other people have different health concerns or other reasons why they don't personally feel comfortable, and I would be happy to consider that. But I would, I don't know if I would want to go so far as to enact a local state of emergency to allow our meetings to stay virtual.
I guess in my opinion, we are in a state of emergency. We don't have a place to meet.
An interesting perspective, Julie. Oh, it's good. It's good. Paul, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess that's a great question of whether it's viewed that we are Jamie hiding or trying to not be accommodating to the public. But I don't know how many of those people would come out anyway, knowing that maybe just want to get out of the house, that they would come to a board, a council meeting just to get away from it, okay? But they may. I don't think they're that exciting, but but the point being, I guess, is that there are some of us that are still a little older than you. And I mean, there's some of the others, you, but they maybe not feel that good about being, you know, in public yet. Unfortunately, Pat and I were able to get our COVID shots, and we get our second one on the last day of April, of February here. So, we're they're going to be better off than we were a month ago. We're going to see how that all works out. But, you know, even to travel to my son's home in Minnesota, we still have some real concerns about that, and we haven't seen our grandkids or them for over a year and a half now. And they close to that year, almost a half now, just because of other issues. And I'm not sure that we've made that decision, how we're going to deal with that. They got a brand new house that we'd love to see. It's just, it's tough decisions right now. And I don't know if Bob Murphy would show up or not. He's one of the older gentlemen that would show up if he could. I know that, but I don't know if he does, would feel safe for that or not.
I had my shot.
I guess, I guess maybe it's worth, oh, sorry, sorry, Donna.
No, I just say, as far as going out, I say I am old, very, and I have not had my shot. I certainly will get it whenever I can, but I have not had that done.
Well, Justin, maybe you can do us, I don't, is it worth a conversation with the county or?
So, I did already reach out to the county administrator and ask if that was something that they were planning on doing. And the response was, basically, we're waiting to see.
Yep, you could have predicted that.
Waiting to see, is that what you said, Justin?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're in a wait-and-see holding pattern.
Well, I think, you know, as one of seven here, I mean, we all need to be comfortable for each other. And so, if there's, you know, I don't want to personally take an action that, you know, some of you don't want to do. You know, I'm willing to try the emergency thing, and, you know, I wasn't aware that we could do it locally as a city. I was thinking it had to be broader, but if there's, you know, hey, you know, maybe we have more power than we understand, or more ability than we understand. You know, and keeping people safe and comfortable is important. And so, I mean, if we have to extend it, if there's a way to extend the virtual thing, you know, that's certainly, I'm certainly, I'm certainly okay with doing that if that's, you know, in favor of some of Paul, like, you know, your concern there. Or Donna, you haven't had a shot. But it's still, it's still, I think, I think the question still is there. There might be other boards that do want to try the in-person thing, and having a space to meet. You know, I still think we should be thinking about signing up with St. Andrews, even if it doesn't kick in in April. If it kicked in in July, there's no sense, we might as well have that figured out, so it's not something that's a question every time we approach the deadline.
Correct, I agree with you.
Well, thanks for letting me talk in front of you.
Of course. That's what you just said at the end is basically what I was going to say is like, you know, in response to what the county said, the wait-and-see, which nobody's surprised by, and I think is a reasonable answer at this point. There's no, I don't see a reason why we can't choose, you know, St. Andrews, and if that's what we're going to choose and say, hey, like, you know, sort of the same response, wait and see. Like, this is what we're going to do. When we do it, we just don't know what it's going to be. I don't, I don't see why that's a problem. I also think that, like, I don't know, I think some of this discussion is just premature based on that whole wait-and-see thing. I mean, we don't know, we still don't know what's happening with vaccine rollout, and things are still changing every day. So, it's just, it is what it is.
Yeah, I mean, at the rate, at the rate that the, I mean, they're doing, they're delivering or giving a lot of vaccinations each day. I mean, there's no question there, but, I mean, the last time I looked, what are we, only like eleven percent vaccinated or? I forget what this stat is, and we have a long way to go.
Yeah.
You know, where we'll be at the end of March, I don't know, but even if, even if the number is only, you know, forty-five percent, which is a bigger number than eleven, it still means that most of the people are not. So, and I would, I would guess that the prudent thing would be to extend the virtual meeting allowance. But I'd still think it makes sense for us to have a backup plan in place. I mean, if we never use it, or we, it gets delayed in use, I don't see a problem in signing up with them is my, my thought.
Agreed.
Yeah, I agree too.
Okay, Justin, you want to, we got about fifteen minutes left. You want to at least introduce some of the other thoughts there, or some of the other things relative to the other parts of your memo?
Sure.
Is that okay with council? Is that okay if we move on?
This Paul, you know, I didn't know that we were going to have that discussion, so I kind of just took the information I had that we were going to look. I got through the, the goal setting and the information we had for today, and I started on Monday's goal setting and work session and some of that, but I didn't get into all the details of Justin's report there that is in the packet here. So, I guess I'm going to be a little behind on all that. Is there any reason we can't delay that and have that discussion, all that on Monday, including what we would have now, and what Zach would be here for all that discussion? Since he brought up the motion to have it moved, the building, to have the space moved, I think it'd be prudent for us to wait to hear what he said as he sees this document from Justin.
Well, if council wants to end early on it, that's fine, Paul, but I, you know, my thought is let Justin have ten minutes or so to just share what's in the thing, gives everybody here on this end, you know, two more days to think about it and think about what he's saying, or what he and staff might be saying in the memo. You know, I realize that some of it's probably going to have to be, you know, repeated or gone over, even for context, when we start on Monday. But I'm pretty sure Zach's read the memo and knows what's in there. So, we might as well use the time since we planned it.
I don't, I don't have any.
We're not making any decisions. I mean, no decisions. Let's just, let's just listen and hear him out. And if there's key questions, I mean, maybe there's something, maybe there's something that there's a question that one of the six of us has that Justin might have to look into on Monday that would be beneficial for the Monday discussion, you know, that comes out of this. I'd rather be able to have that information on Monday than not have it, so.
All right, so can he be sure that when he refers to something, that he indicates where that would be, whether it's in the packet that we have for Monday, or where he's going to talk from? That's all, so I can follow along. Thank you.
Yeah, fair enough.
Sure, and everything that I am going to refer to or would refer to would be in the packet for Monday night.
Okay. Here's pages then, when you talk, please.
Pages, one, okay, just generally. So, kind of starting on page sixty-three, or on page sixty-three of one thirty-six for Monday night's packet. I introduced the facility needs assessment as it relates to city offices. Currently, we are in an office that has a total gross square footage of approximately two hundred and, two thousand five hundred and sixty-eight square feet with a usable square footage of one thousand seven hundred and forty-six square feet. The facility needs assessment calls for seven, roughly seven thousand square feet. And that is for both city offices and council chambers to be in the same place. Council chambers is estimated to be about twelve hundred square feet of that seven thousand. So, even if we were to roughly double the usable square footage that we have right now, that would get you what we have now plus council chambers. Where we are currently at eighty-one twenty-three on the second floor of the PNC Bank, we're paying about ten thousand eight hundred dollars per year for that space. And for as long as I've been around, we've been renting city council chambers at the senior center. And that has actually been our way of contributing towards the senior center for the last, you know, however many years through our rent to them. And that has been roughly eight to nine thousand dollars a year in rent to the senior center. The options that were discussed at the last meeting, either Dexter Crossing or the former Encore Building, are a lot more expensive. I mean, the, you know, kind of starting with the Dexter Crossing option, and this is on page seventy of the, of Monday night's packet. We were able to get a draft lease from them. And once everything is built out, the base rent from them would be the base rent from them would be about $15 a square foot or about $51,000 dollars per year. Just, just in base rent. An additional, I think it was about 4% or 4 and 1/2% would be additional in CAM charges and, and Michelle can describe to you what a CAM charge is if, if you like it. But that's an extra about 15,000 to 16,000 dollars per year in rent. The actual build out costs to move into Dexter Crossing would be roughly $240,000. And that's with two bathrooms at the rear, which means again, residents coming into the office who needed to use the bathroom would have to walk all the way through the city offices. If we wanted to add an additional bathroom, it'd be an additional $20,000. So looking at roughly 260 to 270,000 dollars in build out costs. You also have, we would be responsible for all of the utilities. We would be responsible for premises maintenance, including certain capital costs, including but not limited to if there's a, an HVAC system that exclusively services that unit and tap fees, which would be a little between, I think it was two and $3,000. We also have that, at that location, Jazzercise next door, which holds evening classes. And unless you do like a secondary wall to mitigate some of that sound, they, they blast their, their music at a, at a good pitch. So if we're having a city council meeting in the evening and they had a class, chances are if, if, if the council chambers is on that, that side of the building, we'd be able to, to hear that music and, and the class that's going on next door. The other challenge with that location is that the front of the building is glass, but it's, it's width is shorter than its length. So most of the offices are going to be in the middle of, of the build out, which means that there's going to be no windows for most of, of city staff. Just something to consider. With the former Encore Building at 3126 Broad Street, that's on page 69 of your Monday night's packet. Well, stepping back, the, the space available in Dexter Crossing is about 3,400 square feet. So we're back to basically the current city offices plus council chamber, if that's the way council wanted to go. With the former Encore Building, you'd have about 6,800 square feet, which would, is a lot closer to 7,000 than 3,400. That is, the base rent is $12 a square foot or $81,600 a year. It's the, the per square foot rate is relatively comparable, but you would be paying a lot more in base rent just because the square footage is, is significantly higher. The, the similar CAM charges would apply, it would be about, uh, between 20 and $30,000 a year. So in total, you'd be paying a little over $100,000 a year in rent to the former Encore Building. And again, we'd be responsible for utilities. The, the big difference between the two is the potential cost of build out. The estimated cost of build out for the former Encore Building is about 75,000. He, he indicated that he didn't think that it would be more than 75,000 to build out that space. And and there is option for both to include some or all of the build out cost into the, the rent that you're paying, so they can amortize it out in your rent. So with, with the former Encore Building, you'd bring it up to what's, uh, basically white box standard. And then anything past that, the city would be responsible for, and it's the same with Dexter Crossing. Does anybody have any questions on, on those two options?
So, so just, so, so just in the 75, you know, I've been in the Encore Building a couple of times. So that they'd be tearing out the stage, they'd be tearing out the.
They, they, they have, he, he has torn out everything, just about. He, he also offered, if city council was interested, a tour of the facility. And I, I think that, that both of them would, would be willing to offer tours of, of the space if desired. The, the build out for both would be at least, uh, uh, several months after the signing, after we, after we sign. But yeah, right, right now, the former Encore Building, I, he sent over a couple of pictures, which I don't think got included in, in the packet. I think he just sent those over on Friday, but it's, it's pretty much been gutted.
So what, white box, does that mean that there's an assumed floor plan or number of offices or, or how to, or is that just the open space on the exterior and then we'd have to pay an additional to figure it out, you know, to lay it out the way we wanted it?
Correct, it, it's, it's basically the, the, what's the word? Uh, the, the walls necessary to support the structure.
Yeah, okay.
And then we would add whatever layout we, we need to that, that building.
So we'd be, if we wanted a kitchenette and we needed a dishwasher, we'd, we'd burn the dishwasher and the refrigerator and the countertops and all the other stuff that goes along with, right, my?
Correct.
Okay, and, and.
Unless it's already there. You can have certain, you can have certain, okay.
Understood, understood. Okay, sorry to interrupt. I just was trying to make sure I understood what the white box meant. Thank you.
And, and, and what we, we haven't confirmed this, but our, our operating theory on, on why, on, on the difference in, in build out charges is that we, we think that there is, is more opportunity to use existing walls as additional, or the, the, the walls necessary to support the structure as office walls or, or walls in between spaces. Whereas with Dexter Crossing, I think it's, it, it, it's all completely open.
Which means it's not just walls, it's also electrical and mechanical, to put it.
Yeah, the phone and all the other stuff.
Right.
Does anybody else have any, have any other questions on either of those two buildings or facilities?
Do they use wifi at the Encore? I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
So, so, uh, we, we, we currently provide wifi to our office. So, so that's likely something that, that we would bring with us.
Okay.
And, and that would be true for, for either building.
Hey, Justin. One thing if I could add, on the build out between the two buildings and, and if we were to roll it into our, into a lease, there is no interest charges proposed at the Encore, but it's an 8% interest rate at Dexter Crossing.
Yeah. And the escalation, so, so the increase in rent year to year would be 3% for Dexter Crossing and 2% for Encore. The minimum lease was, I believe, five years at Dexter Crossing and three years at, at the Encore.
So for, for three years at Encore, I mean, just, just roughing this in, you said $108,000 or thereabouts between the 81 and the 27. So that's 325,000 plus at least, at least $75,000 to get it to a white box plus whatever else it would be to put it into functional use.
So, so, so he, he is going to bring it up to white box at no cost to us. The 75 would be our, our build out cost to, to add, to add in whatever offices and we need.
Okay, so 3, 325 plus the 75, so over the, over three years, it would be approximately 400,000 that we would be putting into it as anticipated.
Correct.
Not, not, not including, not including cost of countertops, dishwashers, that, that kind of stuff, I guess I'm getting there.
It would include it.
That includes the cost of, of all, of a kitchenette?
The 75,000 that he's projecting as our build out would include those things, Sean. Based on his estimates.
Okay, that, that's, that's, that's all the additional walls needed to make offices and create a kitchen environment and a conference room and all that other stuff that we're so, you know, whether you have a, a large screen in the conference room and a all that's, okay, that seems, that seems really.
So, the thing we have to remember is there are certain things already existing in the Encore space that Encore put in themselves. For example, the five bathrooms that are there versus the two that are currently in the, the Oxford space. I believe if I'm not mistaken, remembering Encore has a kitchenette currently. So there are certain things like Justin said, walls, kitchenette, bathrooms that you have in Encore that could be utilized in the, in the locations that they are that then decrease our build out costs.
Okay.
The space at Oxford doesn't have that.
Right, I just wanted, okay, thanks. I just want to make sure I'm understanding, but, but about 400,000 over three years round numbers, if I'm doing the math right.
Right, and it, it would, it would be similar at, at Dexter Crossing.
Yeah, with the 240 plus the 50,000 a year for rent and whatever.
Yeah, so, so it would be about 65, 65 to 66,000 a year in rent at Dexter Crossing plus the 244.
Yeah, so it's over 400,000 in three years. Well, hey, Justin, I, I appreciate the intro on some of this and the detail on some of this. You're probably going to have to go through a little bit of it again on Monday. But we're, we're after 11 and I'd like to see if any of the citizens on the call have any any comments before we adjourn. I know there's more, more that you can say on other things, but let's save all that for, for money. Let's not get too far. I appreciate the intro.
Sure.
Are there citizens that would like to speak this, this, um, morning before we close the meeting?
Star nine, if they're on the phone.
Oh, yeah, thanks, Jamie. Star nine, if you're on the phone, right. Good point. And, and Jamie did send me a note that I thought was a good suggestion. Since we've had more participation with the goal setting and the citizens coming in, we'll probably add to the agenda a similar comment that talks about, you know, sort of a five minute per person thing so that we allow time for the, the citizen comment, but don't use it all up and let, let us keep, you know, keep using this for the workshop that it was originally intended. So I thought that was a good, good comment. Sorry, I didn't email you back, Jamie, on that, but I wanted to recognize the good suggestion there, so I'm trying to be respectful of that. Okay, well then I guess, I guess we're adjourned for now, or I'd like to thank staff and everybody that did attend, our student representatives, but staff, appreciate, appreciate you working another day for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Have a nice weekend. Have a good weekend, everybody. Enjoy, enjoy the social district.
If you're young.
Yeah.